If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight for our regular Board of Directors meeting. I am going to turn it over to Director Gronewald to read our land acknowledgement.
Thank you. Evergreen Public Schools resides on the traditional lands of the Chinookan peoples and the Kallits tribe. They have lived on and cared for this land and its waterways since time immemorial. We thank them for their stewardship and make this acknowledgement to open a space of recognition, inclusion, and respect for all Indigenous students, families, and staff in our community.
Great, thank you Ginny. Before we start with the agenda, I wanted to recognize that Director Perkins is away on business travel and Director Witherspoon had a family commitment this evening and they are unable to attend. I think we'll take a motion to excuse their absence.
Still moved.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the agenda. Our first order of business is to adopt this evening's agenda. Do we have a motion for that?
I move to adopt tonight's agenda as presented.
Thank you Ginny, thanks Victoria. Moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect, thank you. All right, next up, probably the best part of our meeting tonight will be special recognition. We have the district art show winners. I know that we just announced that we had the artwork up here for everyone to take a peek at, but we're going to bring up Corinne Ormsen to the stand to introduce our winners. Hi Corinne.
Hi, good evening to the school board and Superintendent Boyd and to everyone here and on Zoom. We're excited to have a full house to share our art with tonight. Tonight's art is presented from our district art show. So the district art show is a culmination of art and learning throughout this whole year. It's present in K through 12th grade. And so tonight you're going to see the winners from that district art show. It was all displayed, all of them were displayed at the Cascade Park Library in May. And we're so thankful for their partnership and willingness to display and bring it to the community. We have, tonight we have eight pieces for you. The six superintendent winners, and these, while they're called the superintendent winner, they are actually chosen by a panel of professional artists that we bring in and they work really hard to look at technique and just really appreciate all of the art and then grant those awards. We also have two special awards that we will also get to tonight. So we're going to call up each artist to present them to the board. And so when students, when I call your name, you're going to come right up to Karen over here and she'll help you bring that artwork up to the board. So first, from Riverview Elementary, we have first grader Emily Lingman. Emily has won the superintendent winner award for the kindergarten through second grade category. Her work is entitled Robot.
Nice job Emily. Emily, what made you decide to draw a robot for the art show?
It was an assignment for her art class.
That's a good answer. Nice job.
Our superintendent winner for third through fifth grade is from Silver Star Elementary, fifth grader Matthew Ignatowski. And his piece is entitled Koi Fish.
That's beautiful.
Excellent work.
Our middle school overall award winner is Sarah Ulroyd. She's from Pacific Middle School in the seventh grade and her work is entitled Orbs.
Sarah, what was your inspiration?
I wanted to like put all the like parts of my life and like the aspects of my life into a circle.
That's really cool.
That's inspiring. And I love the use of color. I mean, it's vibrant and beautiful. Thank you so much.
Our superintendent winner for high school 2D is from Heritage High School in the 10th grade. This is Rain Erickson. Rain's piece is called Man on Stool.
That's incredibly detailed. Good job. That's fantastic. Excellent job.
Our superintendent winner for high school 3D is from Union High School and is in the 10th grade. This is Alex Nguyen Navarro. Alex's piece is entitled Dragon Eye.
Oh, okay. That makes... It is.
And our superintendent for high school in the photo category, the winner is Lana Sopressert. Lana is from Union High School in the 12th grade and her photo is called Moon.
Yeah, that's incredible. As we talk about astronomy and later, right?
So those superintendent winning pieces will be framed, not the 3D one, but the 2D ones, will all be framed and hang outside in our hallways here. We have two more awards. We have, and these two awards both are given because they represent the spirit of art. So we have one for elementary and we have one for secondary. The elementary one is called the Mary Kamak Award after a longtime volunteer. And this, this award goes to Darmia Seminario Char... I don't know, Mary Kamak. Sorry, that's the 11th grade one, isn't it? We should do elementary first, I'm sorry. So our Sharon Springer is the longtime volunteer in elementary art and that is Madeline Prentice.
All right, I love it, Madeline. That's amazing.
Madeline is from Pioneer Elementary and is in the first grade.
Good job.
And our spirit of art in secondary is called the Mary Kamak Award. And that goes to Darmia Seminario Charisee. And she's from Union in the 11th grade.
That's amazing. All right, I got to ask, how long did that take? Three days, wow.
Oh my gosh, you can do it in three years.
Julie, I asked that question.
That's incredible.
That is.
So the art will stay here on display so that you can check it out after the meeting. Okay, and that's all for us. Thank you so much.
I had an opportunity to go over and watch all, this is a really good representative sampling of the work, but it's just amazing, the talent of our students. And I was a little disappointed that it's the superintendent's award and I don't get to be the one that judges, but I'm not qualified, so I think it's better. So thank you for not putting me in that position and congratulations to all of the winners. You guys are amazing.
One of my favorite things over the years is always coming to district offices and being able to look at all the artwork from past years displayed. And it just creates such a legacy of our students and just the outstanding work. And give a shout out too to all the volunteers that work in our elementary schools and the art program because we couldn't do it without them too.
Absolutely.
We've got some talent sitting in these halls.
All right, next on our agenda is the board consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion for approval.
I approve the board's consent agenda.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you. Next up is our superintendent consent agenda. Again, we'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move for approval of the superintendent consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, next up is the superintendent report. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Boyd for an update.
Thank you, President Bocanegra. So good evening, I want to recognize that we have many of our teachers in attendance tonight. A big reason you're here is that the district is currently in bargaining process to work towards a new agreement with our teachers' union. So my update related to bargaining tonight is that both bargaining teams are putting in lots of hours as they work towards the common goal of coming to a fair agreement that supports all of our students and staff and is one that we can afford and sustain. As for other updates, we had some amazing graduations this weekend. They were all just incredible displays of the culmination of what all of our staff and students achieved throughout their whole K-12 experience. Just a big shout out to everybody who was involved in that. And a special shout out to Archway Academy that had us all in tears. Archway, if you don't know, is a school that supports students who are transitioning to the workforce from 18 to 21 and have special needs. And just the way that the students talked about the staff and the staff talked about the students and all of what they showed in that was just a real inspiration. So it had had us all weeping. Also, principals, teachers, and staff are digging in to finish strong. Next few days, a lot of fun things happen. And our teams, I think you'll see that end of the year celebrations when our comms team, Craig comes up to share all the end of the year celebrations. So just want to congratulate all of our students and staff for making it almost through the year. And now we have some fun stuff ahead of us that we can look forward to. And I see our two student reps smiling, big smiles, so I know you're getting close. So that was my report.
Great, thank you John. All right, next on our agenda is instructional materials adoption. We have astronomy, which is a second reading. We have workshopped this, brought it to a first meeting or first reading in our last meeting. And so tonight will be a second reading. Our science tose, Crystal Wolf, presented at the workshop and at our last meeting, both. I don't believe we received any questions since either time. Is Crystal online to answer any questions if we have anything? Okay. I'm not sure if she wanted to add anything before, in case we had questions, perfect. At this time, since we are, it is an action item, we'll take questions from the audience if there's any concerning just the astronomy adoption. Any questions from the audience about the astronomy adoption? All right, seeing none, then we'll go ahead and take questions or comments from the board.
I don't have any.
Oh, I don't have any questions. I just had a comment that in reviewing over the materials, it looks like a really exciting bit of curriculum and I think it's going to serve the needs of some students that are really going to be fascinated by what they learn in there. So I'm happy about this one.
Really exciting time to be learning astronomy.
It is.
Yeah, and I think it's a great program that we have in our high schools, the partnership with UW to get potential college credit. And it sounds like we have a lot of students that are interested in it and so we have some great material for them coming. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay. All right, then we will move for approval.
I move that we adopt the new astronomy curriculum as presented.
Second.
Moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. All right, next up is the good news report. John alluded to it a few minutes ago, that Craig had all the good news for us, all the year-end celebrations.
Thank you board, thank you Superintendent Boyd. I do not have all of them because, once again, this year we are, the communications team is doing our end of the year celebration social media campaign where we get out to all 38 schools and we post and document and share out an event from each school. So I have a few. One of the best ones that incorporates multiple schools is the grad walks, which our high schools do. This is Evergreen High School's grad walk where they hit the elementary schools and middle schools that most of these students attended beforehand. Just a wonderful event for, I think, for both groups, you know, the seniors to be able to celebrate their graduation and, you know, get high fives and handshakes from the elementary and middle school kids. And also a way for our elementary school and middle school students to see what it's all about and what the finish line looks like. Heritage High School, end of year celebration, one of theirs was the Pacific Islander Culture Night, which this was organized and put together and had dance, storytelling, food, just another way what we're trying to get our Pacific Island community together and connected. This is an event that they're going to repeat moving forward. I'm going to move down to this very cool Burnt Bridge Creek Elementary School. Last week held a modern band concert. So these elementary school kids played contemporary music. I'm not going to show my age by trying to name the cool music that they played, but as you could see, they showed out and rocked out like the rock stars they are. Just a really cool event at BBC. Emerald welcomed in as we say goodbye to some of our graduates. We've got new kindergartners coming in. Emerald has a future honors event where the kids that are going to be kindergartners next year got to check out their school and meet some of the staff. I'm going to skip down. Here at Union High School had this really cool event that they had not been able to do during COVID, but they brought it back and that's the mock interviews. Every single sophomore, over 400 sophomores, had interviews for potential jobs that didn't really exist, but it's a way to practice a job interview. I was lucky enough to take part in this and it's just so impressive to see these students. They prepared resumes and they came prepared to answer questions. I also want to thank the volunteers that, from our community, that came out and were the interviewers because they sat in with, like I said, there was over 400 sophomores took place with this. And finally, I want to mention Covington's marching band. They got to take part in the Rose Festivals Junior Parade. And if you click on this link here, it goes to right to the part where Covington was showcased in the television coverage on Fox 12. So that's my report, thank you. And again, please, everybody, follow Evergreen Public Schools on Facebook and Instagram as you can see all the events from all 38 of our schools. We've got a few more days to get them all in.
Good shout out because I'm following and I enjoy seeing every single one of them. It's a lot of fun to watch all the year-end events. All right, next on the agenda is our financial statements. The board has been provided with the May financial statement and the April financial statement. These are for information and review. Next on the agenda is our board comments. These are comments by the school board. Who'd like to start us off? Do we have anything we want to add?
I, not anything specific, just graduations, which were amazing. It's always a great part of the year, the end of the year and handing all of those students their diplomas as they walk across the stage. Seeing the amazing hats, the accomplishments, the bright smiling faces as they come across the stage to meet their new future. And it's always just fills my bucket, so I really enjoy that time of year. And this year I came away with some golf balls. I somehow ended up with everybody's golf balls. So, you still have your four? Okay, I ended up with like, I don't know, seven of them. So, yes, so we got golf balls this year too. That's all I have.
That was fun.
I reiterate what Ginny said about the graduations. I've said this a million times, but it's always true. I always think about the first day of school with the kindergartners and the looks on their faces when they come in the door and how excited and some of them are nervous and some of them are just so happy, you know, it's just a mix. And it's exactly the same look in the eyes of seniors when they're walking across that stage. You get that same look of this is new, this is something I don't know. Some of them are so excited, some of them look kind of nervous. And it's gratifying to think about them at both ends. And this year's was, I think, one of the best graduation years. So inspiring, the kids that spoke were just incredible. Everybody was just so, just great, they were just great. And the weather, you know, was, you know, was perfect. So, yeah, it was, it was a wonderful time. I had the pleasure yesterday of, I sit on the Burton Counseling Advisory Team. And so we had the final, you know, the year end and looking at the data. And it was a mixed bag of success and it prompts more questions and more actions. But what I was so impressed with was just the intentionality of looking from the counseling perspective. And they were really focusing on hope and helping kids develop hope and seeing their potential and what they can do, especially as it is in regards to mathematics. And so I was just very impressed with the work that they've done there this year. And they had to, you know, do that with a move in the middle of it and getting everybody readjusted and all of that. So I was very, very impressed and I'm excited about that team. And then, do you want me to go ahead?
Yeah, let's do it.
Okay, is Clarissa Hightower here? Come on up here, little lady. So Clarissa, as many know, is retiring from our system.
She's breaking our hearts.
And, you know, I have to say, this is a shining star right here. And every time she comes in to speak to us and talk to us about kids, that she just glows with the caring and the love that she has for our kids and bringing this whole, the concept of equity to just a whole nother level than we've ever had before. And with such a passion and just a heartfelt belief that every one of our kids can learn and thrive and deserves, you know, the right place to be. And so the board has a little thank you for you. Because we know your family likes Legos and you always give people flowers.
You will be tremendously missed. We will miss you so much. Thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you Clarissa.
Thank you.
Thank you Clarissa.
Anything else from you Victoria?
No.
No?
I just want to cry because I don't want Clarissa to go.
Just a couple things for me. I love graduation too. I feel like, and I talk to everybody that I can about graduation. I think people at work get tired of me talking about graduation as much as I do. I have an opportunity at work sometimes to work with our leaders and engage them in conversation about how we can be better leaders. And I always use examples of graduation, every time, every chance I get because it's just, it's just so much fun. It really is purposeful and it gives so much meaning to the work that we do as board members. And I think about, kind of like what Victoria said, every kid that comes, that starts in school and all the way, those 13 years of education, it takes everybody to wrap their arms around them to really make that happen. And that first step off that stage is their biggest transition to the rest of their life. And I know that everybody works so hard to make sure that they're as best prepared that they can be to move forward in that transition. So I really just wanted to thank everybody in our system for all the hard work that you do to help our students get to that point because it's such a joy for us to be able to see them at graduation and their families are so proud of them. So thank you to everyone that has a part in that. And with that, I just wanted to also echo what John said in his superintendent report that we recognize that we have a lot of teachers here tonight and the district is in the midst of engaging in bargaining sessions. And as a board, we're confident that our bargaining team is working in good faith and that the district and the teachers will come to an agreement that will keep our schools strong and that will help keep us financially solvent. I know we can do this, thank you. All right, future agenda items. Anything on our list? I know that we have been working hard to plan our summer planning meeting and I think we're almost there. I don't think we can add anything more to it because John said we've got two full days. Yeah, six full days. And probably a lot of preparation. So anything we want to add? I know we only have one meeting in July, so that'll be where everybody, hopefully, will be taking a break this summer. All right, we'll move on then to our student board representative report. I know that Covington and Solomon are probably both ready to end the school year and have a report for us.
Hello, yeah. Hello, everybody. So as we all know that the last day of school is coming up, which means it's time for a few days, barbecues, carnivals, and move up ceremonies. There are many activities happening this week at the Midland High School. So we have Legacy High School, which is, they're having their award ceremony. On the last day of school, Pacific is having a few day, and Frontiers is holding, is hosting a talent show. Then lastly, we have Evergreen High School, who will be hosting their first ever and with Robert Frank's Junior June 16th Basketball Tournament, which is being hosted by the Evergreen Black Student Union. Thank you.
Hi, I'm going to be reporting on what's going on in our elementary schools, but I do first want to say that at our last board meeting... do first want to say that at our last board meeting, the morning after that, I went on a trip with the Heritage Twin Symphony and Jazz One to California to be judged at a festival. And I'm so happy to say that our Win Symphony and our Jazz One both ranked gold at the Forum Festival in LA. And thank you. Thank you so much. And this brings us at the top 5% of bands in the country. So I'm just so proud to share that with everybody. Thank you. Our principal clarinetist of the Win Symphony, Eric Jeffrey, was named the outstanding musician. And our drummer of our Jazz Band One, Ethan Burdick, was named the outstanding jazz musician.
Wow.
Thank you. So in our elementary schools, I know in elementary school, the last day of school is a lot more fun than in high school. We're seeing lots of barbecues, we're seeing field days, fun runs, fifth grade graduations from most of our elementary schools, if not all, lots of fifth grade celebrations. We're having at Furcrest a staff versus fifth graders kickball. We're having at Riverview a move-up day. Images holding a kindergarten graduation. And there are a lot of exciting things happening as we wrap up the end of our year. Thank you.
Thanks, Sullivan. I was, when we were at the Heritage ribbon cutting for the new addition, they had the band there. And this was before Sullivan was part of our board. And there she was, leading that band. And I was like, she's impressive. And so there's not a doubt in my mind that you didn't go down to LA and take that competition.
Musicians make great leaders.
All right, thank you for your reports. All right, next on our agenda is public comments. At this time, community members wishing to address the board may do so during the designated time on the agenda for public comments, as long as the comments are not personnel-related or about an individual employee or student and are not legal in nature. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to address the board. Comments are to be directed to the Board of Directors as a whole and may not be addressed to any individual member of the board, the administrative staff, or the audience. Please state your name and district affiliation, if any. I believe we have three that have signed up virtually this evening. The first one is Cara. I don't know that I'm going to attempt to...
Cara is not on, but Toby is.
Okay, then we will move to Toby. We'll circle back to Cara at the end in case she joins us. So Toby Fitch? Okay, Toby will be using an interpreter. It will be just one second.
You just need to tell me that Toby's...
Or, okay. Do you want to let Toby know that we're ready to go?
This is the opposite. Hello, this is for the deaf and hard-of-hearing community. Thank you so much for letting me share my concerns for today. My name is Toby. I am a deaf designer for the last eight years. And if I may be brief with my statement, John, in your bio, you mentioned that you had many years of experience in multiple language and education. Jacqueline, you may understand what it truly means to belong to a minority group. And in many ways, our community is very similar when it comes to culture and the sense of belonging and having a role model in our community so that we have someone to look up to. And there's so much more. I strongly recommend that you consider your personal experiences with my next comment. In the past decade, we have seen an alarming amount of school districts deciding to shut down their deaf and hard-of-hearing programs. And I would not want for Evergreen School District to be another tally to that list. As you see, I've grown up in the deaf and hard-of-hearing programs and I was profoundly impacted. Otherwise, I would not be here today. I started in a regular neighborhood, a neighborhood school. After trying for a couple of years, I ended up going to a deaf and hard-of-hearing program in a similar capacity that Evergreen School District has had for many years. That program, in short, has saved my life. But it wasn't the school that made the decision. It was my two deaf parents that had advocated for me, for my education and for my access to the language and so much more. The reason why I had moved out of the deaf and hard-of-hearing program is because my school did not, was not able to support me in what I needed. And I did not have, sorry, I was falling behind compared to my peers. I was socially isolated because I was not able to communicate with my classmates. I was often made fun of because children at that age do not understand what it means to be deaf. The teachers are not equipped to educate me because they didn't know sign language. And they did not have the knowledge to educate the children who were deaf. I can go on and on. This is not a new problem, but it is a problem that has plagued our community for a long time and it's going to continue to happen over and over again. Shutting down the deaf and hard-of-hearing program would mean that the neighborhood schools would be left to their own resources to support our deaf and hard-of-hearing children and depriving them of their access to education and to language and culture. These resources come in a variety of forms, but I am emphasizing having the resources together would help our youth to be successful. If it wasn't for the deaf and hard-of-hearing program, I would not be where I am today, working for a Fortune 50 company. Thank you for your consideration and hopefully you will consider our community comments from here on forward.
All right, next is Kim Olson.
She's coming in.
Okay, thank you. Do they need an interpreter?
I don't think so.
Hi, Kim.
She needs to unmute.
Oh, will you unmute your... There we go. Perfect. Thank you.
Hi. Hello. I am a teacher within the Evergreen School District. I am a preschool teacher in the deaf and hard-of-hearing program at Furcrest. I'm currently on a leave of absence, but understand that there is a move to close the program and send our students to neighborhood schools, which I think is a mistake. And I think it will set our students up for isolation, communication frustration, and breakdowns, loneliness, and limited academic support from teachers who don't know how to actually teach them or know how to communicate with them even. And I think it will lead to some academic decline. And I will not, it will not close the gaps, the educational gaps that we're trying to close with our attempts at inclusion. I wanted to ask the board to consider what it means or what the difference between deaf education and special education is. They're very different. And I have contacted our representatives who sponsored the House Bill 1436 for funding special education and asked them to examine their thinking around special education and deaf ed and the difference between the two. Our deaf students, inclusion for deaf students does not mean plopping them into a building where other people around them can hear. Our students can't hear them and have no access to them. They have no access to communication, the education around them, their peers, and so then a learning that's happening in the environment. They have no access to that. And neighborhood schools don't even know where to begin to serve our students. And the parents and concerned citizens that have already written to the board and written to the superintendent have received the response that we stand firm in our confidence and our ability to serve these students. I don't believe that the neighborhood schools are prepared to do that. And I would like to see some examination of why there is a belief that special education teachers are capable of educating our deaf students. They are not. They have not been trained in deafness. They don't understand the language acquisition or communication needs of our students. And I, more importantly, I've sent a letter to all of you. You guys will get that. It's very long. But I think the most important thing I would like to, like the board to consider is keeping the program at Furcrest as a model program, also as an option for parents. Parents no longer have an option, an in-between place. It's either the school for the deaf or a neighborhood school. The Furcrest offered us a place where parents could train their children, their children could get access to education and language and also be able to learn how to use an interpreter and be mainstreamed in school so that they can succeed at other schools when they leave Furcrest. There is no option like that if you take this away. You're removing our least restrictive environment. The least restrictive environment for deaf children is a language-rich environment, not a neighborhood school. So I would like to see, I wrote down what I would like to see Furcrest be in terms of a model program. I think it could be a safe and accessible space for deaf students who have language acquisition, literacy development, and communication needs. I think it could be a place where students who didn't succeed in oral programs can come and get the language that they need to catch up with similar-aged peers. And it's a place where deaf and hard-of-hearing students feel welcomed, supported, and have access in the environment with deaf peers and adults who are language models. And also in a school full of people who actually understand them and know how to work with them and know how to communicate with them. Hearing students cannot be language models for deaf students. You can't hear them. They can't hear them. You can't be a language model for me if I can't hear what you're saying and I can't communicate with you. It doesn't make sense to drop our children in the middle of a pool where they can't swim and can't understand what's going on. So I would like the board to reconsider special education and deaf education and understand the differences between the two and that inclusion for our students is nothing without access.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Did Cara join?
Not yet.
Okay. All right, thank you. Then we're going to go ahead and move on to people who have signed up to speak in person this evening. We'll have the timer up on the board, so please be mindful of the three minutes that's on the screen. The first person to come up to speak is Stephanie Wagner. Hi, Stephanie.
Hello. I'm Stephanie Wagner. I'm a parent of a seventh grader at Covington Middle School. This is my first time speaking.
Okay, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I have been a part of the school district since my daughter was in kindergarten. And so I have been a part of the school district and a volunteer in good standing for quite some time, up until now. I received, I was also a parent network president of a 501(c)(3) for our nonprofit at the school. And I had some, I had to figure out how to divide myself as a parent and as a volunteer parent network president. And I had some complaints as a parent that was involving my child as a parent. And then I also had some complaints that, with the school, as a parent network president that I was trying to figure out. I was also put in a situation where I was also the only board member trying to recruit other board members because I was left with the board to have at hand to figure this all out on my own. And I was supposed to have an advisor to help me advise. That didn't quite go as planned. I'm asking the board to hear me out. There's probably a little bit more personal stuff at hand that I can divulge in this meeting or the time limit. So I would really like for you to email me if you have any questions. And I would also like the opportunity to speak with John Boyd, the superintendent. I feel like he could probably help in this situation and clear up some communication. We are worried about how volunteers are treated at that school. We're also worried about some health issues because my daughter is peanut, tree nut allergy. She has a severe anaphylactic allergy. We are working on a 504 plan with her, too, but I'm not going to worry about that until the next school year. But on April 11th, I was revoked of my volunteer duties and I'm here to appeal that. And we'd like to talk to the board and the superintendent of my issues.
Okay, thank you. All right, next, and I apologize that we missed this one, Lindsay Maroz. Hi, Lindsay.
Hi. Hi, my name is Lindsay Maroz and it is my pleasure to serve as our district's early childhood teacher of the deaf, and I love my job. I've heard the idea that there are not enough students to support the continuance of the DHH program, but if all the students are allowed to stay who want to stay, we would have about 13 deaf students in our program school-wide, which would need five interpreters, two teachers of the deaf, plus classroom teachers who are already familiar with supporting these students in their general education classrooms. So collectively, that would be over 20 people in one building who could co-create a deaf-friendly community where sign language is prevalent. That is significant. Closing our program also means changing the dynamic of our early childhood classroom. Special Services proposed eliminating the DHH-specific early childhood class and changing it to a special education class, but this would take away from the language support that our DHH kids need. Students start our class at age three or four and with a language skills average of an equivalent of a 12- to 18-month-old. In our part-time program, we only have eight and a half hours per week to attempt to close those gaps in language delays with the goal of kindergarten readiness. In a six-month study of language growth, the students in my class grew between 12 to 25 months in language, a growth rate of one to two years in the span of six months with only eight and a half hours per week would not be possible if the classroom was integrated with hearing peers with disabilities. This type of language growth takes the expertise of a teacher who is trained specifically in deaf education with an emphasis on language acquisition to address potential language deprivation, which is a cognitive condition which happens when a child does not acquire a first language in early childhood. Children who are DHH are at the highest risk of language deprivation, which has lifelong effects. Regular special education teachers are not qualified to address language deprivation or to support sign language acquisition. Deaf education is a bilingual and bicultural education, not unlike our dual-language Spanish immersion programs, which are not being disseminated. We are leaving bilingual programs intact for students who are hearing, but taking away the bilingual DHH program from students who need it the most. To borrow from our district's equity and diversity team, these students who are the farthest from, these are students who are the farthest from educational justice. How does this promote equity? In our district's strategic plan, our equity core values states that students need to see themselves reflected in their learning and in their school. It also states that students need to feel a sense of belonging. Unless you've seen it for yourself, it's hard to explain the sense of belonging that happens when children are raised in a community of peers who share their language or use the same type of listening device. The younger kids look up to the older students who are like them. And for the older kids, being a role model cultivates a sense of confidence. This type of belonging cannot be replicated with the neighborhood schools... This type of belonging cannot be replicated with a neighborhood school's model. Please keep our deaf and hard-of-hearing program intact as an option for families and IEP teams.
Thank you, Lindsay. All right, next up is Adam Magulera. Adam, are you here?
I can't hear you.
Oh, Adam? Oh.
Hello. Thank you, Evergreen School Board and Superintendent Boyd, good evening. My name is Adam Magulera. I'm an English language arts teacher in Evergreen Public Schools. And as we approach the end of the school year, we're just kind of wrapping up staff evaluations. And I would like to provide my own evaluation as an observing teacher to the performance of the district's bargaining team. You know, the Evergreen educators are asking to add resources to support the growing needs of our students, and I would say the district bargaining team has been unsatisfactory in that regard. As the district wants less special education supports, when I am witnessing federal violations towards special needs students' IEPs, no improvements in staffing for nurses, counselors, and paraeducator support. When my school has to split a nurse, our counseling was cut and we have half the paraeducators we had last year. When my paraeducators are absent, no one comes in to substitute for them, to support my students. Our Evergreen educators are, want to ensure consistent and supportive learning environments that meet the academic, emotional, social, and behavioral needs of all students. And unfortunately, the district is unsatisfactory there too, as they want to increase K through eight class sizes when I can't provide enough individualized attention to my students already. And they're cutting the librarian in my school, who is an important partner for teaching my students about reading in my English class. When it comes to safeguard teachers' time and autonomy for quality instruction preparation, the district bargaining team is also unsatisfactory there, as they want to take away my collaboration time with teachers to improve student, student learning. They want to limit my expertise in designing relevant, engaging lessons for students and micromanage me to teach crappy curriculum, to be honest, that the district has wasted millions of dollars on, and I, a lot of people feel that way. When it comes to improving systems to ensure a safe and healthy learning environment for staff and students, again, the district bargaining team is unsatisfactory, as they declined all proposals from educators addressing student behaviors when staff do not feel safe because abusive and violent students in crisis are attacking other students and staff. The district has no plan to address students abusing their technology to play games during learning, cyberbullying others, uncontrollable vaping, increasing threat assessments, and suicide risk. And when it comes to maintaining members' salaries in line with inflation and keep them competitive, once again, the district is unsatisfactory there with their bargaining team, as they don't want to honor their promise to pay us when inflation is so high as it is. The district wants educators to earn less and work more with overcrowded classrooms and less staff to help. So in terms of a statement of performance, I would say that the district bargaining team is not meeting the district's values and commitment to equity to provide for the basic needs of Evergreen students and staff. They are claiming students, staff, and their families must work harder and be given less to be successful in school. The district bargaining team is in need of an improvement plan by the superintendent. Absent of improvement, the superintendent should consider replacing members of the district bargaining team and be more present and engaged in negotiations to reach a tentative agreement. And I have copies that I'll distribute to all the board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Hey, Stephen. How are you?
Just fine. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Steve Houston. I thank you for this opportunity to comment. As a reintroduction to myself, I have a bachelor's science in civil engineering from University of Portland. I got a master's science in statistics from Oregon State University. I've taught math classes at several community colleges in the Portland-Vancouver area and spent 30 years as a data analyst. I'm very well-versed in many aspects of mathematics, not all of them, however. During the school year, I've acted as a volunteer in elementary and middle school, twice weekly in a second-grade class for about an hour and a half a day, five times weekly in a seventh-grade math class, about one hour a day, very interesting, by the way, where I did activities as mundane as handing back teacher-graded papers to assisting students when the teacher gave a class lesson on percentages, and then answering their questions and helping them to understand the process. Now, of course, the teacher also did this, but in a class of 23-plus, 25-plus students, when I was there, I effectively cut their class size in half and got a lot more of their questions answered. Four times weekly in two eighth-grade math classes, about an hour a day, and I did the same thing there as in the seventh-grade class. The assistance I gave to the teachers I worked with did not involve what I call administrative aspects of teaching, creating lesson plan, you know, the real work of it. The lesson plans and exams, grading papers, disciplining students, contacting parents, all that stuff. But again, when I was there, I felt that we got a lot more of the students' questions answered and hopefully helped them on their way. I've got a lot of observations on these classes. It was very interesting, but I, I think that there's several conclusions I have that I give to you that I hope the district can be made better. The resources involved are, not surprisingly, time and money. During the weeks when, when the testing was done, eye-ready and stuff, there, in my opinion, there was much less learning that was occurring, not only because the students are stressed, but those weeks are invariably accompanied by early releases and two-hour late starts and other schedule changes that dramatically, in my opinion, reduce the useful class times for instruction. The other thing is, they also need, I think, more time, not only to make up for that time that's lost, but also there's a lot more stuff we got to stuff into their heads so they can take command of the world that is out there. How much time? I don't know. In, in my opinion, the board and others have to really go to the state of Washington and ask them for more resources. I don't know if you ask for more time. I know 180 days is the minimum, but, sorry for your hardworking folks there, but I, I think, I think they may agree, there's a lot more time. If they had more time to do some of this work, I think results might be better. And the state, I think, has to pony up some more money for you all to do that. Let's see. Oh, yeah. And finally, Evergreen needs to accommodate individuals like myself who want to help out, but they don't know how to approach a district with offers of assistance. As I mentioned earlier, some sort of volunteer coordinator might be helpful. Now, a little bit of self-credit, I'm not professionally inclined, for my statistics background, to take full credit for the following, but I'd like to hope that I had a small part in it. The second-grade class at Riverview, where I volunteered twice a week, had the most improved math score of the whole school, according to this teacher that told me that. Yes. So, was it me? Eh, maybe. A little bit.
Thank you, Stephen.
It's, things like, yeah, I know, I'm done.
Okay.
So if you've got any questions, but yeah, it's, it's been a fun trip. I'll do it again next year.
Thank you. Right, thank you. Kristy Dunn.
Good evening. I'm Kristy Dunn, and I've been teaching math at Heritage for the last eight, 13 years. One of the greatest highlights of my career was when Mr. Boyd came to my classroom last year and presented me with the huge honor of being named a 2022 Evergreen School District Educator of the Year. Thank you. But I'm here heartbroken to share with you that I'm leaving. I truly wanted to spend my entire career working here. I had 20 more years to give to Heritage. I loved it. I love the students. I love my colleagues, and I love this community. But I'm worn out and I'm burnt out. The number one reason I'm leaving is that I just don't feel supported. The worst part is that it was 100% avoidable. I used to have a support system built into my job. My classroom was right next to three of my best friends, who had the same teaching philosophies that I did. Our support of one another directly positively impacted our students. But four years ago, our admin decided to start moving our classrooms. We begged to stay together. We wrote letters. We had meetings, but our input about our daily working conditions wasn't important. This year, I only had one friend near me, and when her cancer came back at the start of second semester and she went on leave, I was left utterly alone. That's when my teaching world crumbled. My job satisfaction and support system at school didn't matter. But supporting teachers does matter. To me, it mattered more than anything. The support I needed was my community of teacher friends, and that would have cost the district $0 to accommodate. But now, without the support, everything is crushing me. This is an insanely difficult job. I've been overwhelmed with too many preps. Last year, I had five preps, and this year, they assigned me four, so I requested to go part-time, so that I would only have two, but that request was denied by HR. I have an oversized class of 38 students this year. I'm required to teach a district-mandated curriculum that I don't enjoy because there aren't enough resources within the curriculum to reach the diverse needs of our students, and my students are struggling. And there's pressure to grade, grade certain ways that I morally and ethically disagree with. In the last three days since I've announced that I'm leaving, I've had numerous teachers come up to me with tears in their eyes and tell me that they wish the same thing. We are sad. We love what we do and we love these kids, but the burnout is real and the support here is majorly lacking. I used to love to come to school overjoyed every day, and you could see it radiate off me, and it was reflected in my classroom daily. But I'm ready to find that joy again, because I know that teaching is what I'm meant to do, but I'm ready for a new place where I can shine again. Thank you.
All right, next is Kristy Peek.
Bear with me. I think I'm wearing two contacts for a close-up today, instead of one for distance and one for close-up. But thank you for this opportunity to speak and good evening to the board members, to John Boyd, and to the community that is here today. To the board, I want to acknowledge that you have a really difficult job. This district belongs to this community. They know, this community knows that education is a cornerstone of hope, and they've supported this district, and they want the best for kids. They know how important education is. And as those that have been elected and trusted to ensure our students get a high-quality education, it's a heavy load. You are accountable to our community. So, it's, it's a heavy load, but it's one that, that you chose and that you have to carry. But I do empathize with that. It's not easy. I'm asking you tonight to listen, and I'm a little late because there have been a lot of good speakers, and I hope you heard them. Listen to the people who work directly with your students. People who chose, and some who continue to choose, this job in education, to educate kids 3 to 21 with their hard work and their passion. Counselors, teachers, social workers, librarians, psychologists, therapists, and other champions of students. They've been telling you that neighborhood schools, the way that we have it now is a failed model. Students are not getting what they need. They're not getting what they need. Teachers are stretched thin. They're desperate for someone to hear their cries for help and support and resources. They've invited you to their classrooms. I've heard them here invite you to their classrooms. I don't know if, if you've gone to their classrooms to see what things are like. What they've gotten in return, the response to their cries for help, that will make this job even, that will make this job less difficult than it is. They got mitigation plans that are colorful, fancy diagrams of how they're going to take on the work of someone that was here last year, or someone at district office is going to take on the work, or they're going to take it on their already overflowing plate. They got slideshows about strategic plans and pressure to do phonics at 9:46 with fidelity every morning.
Just a few more seconds, Kristy, okay?
Yep. They are asking for your help. I've asked for your help. I don't think the bargaining team is hearing us. I feel like they've been dismissed, like we've been dismissed, and it is time to listen.
Thank you, Kristy. Next up is Camille Lohman. Is Camille here? All right, we're going to move on to the next speaker. Is Stephanie here? Stephanie Houston? Okay. Are you Melissa? Oh, excellent. Hi there.
Hi. I was going to sneak away for the bathroom. Hi, thanks for me being here today. My name is Melissa Kaiten. I'm an ASL teacher. I'm a sign language interpreter. And most so, I'm a CODA. For the first 10 years of my life, I was the only hearing child in my house, and I grew up in a deaf world. Both my parents, my brother, and others in my family are deaf. And as a little girl, growing up in poverty, I witnessed the hardships and the barriers amongst the deaf from the basic reading and writing skills, communication, the lack of security and self-esteem. Growing up, I had to put my childhood aside to learn to be independent, as my family suffered with language deprivation. I was the reader, the writer, and the voice in my family. I've witnessed the impact and the importance of having a deaf space to gain educational and language support, the one that a child can gain, community, leadership, and independence. By not providing the right support is creating a barrier. It's not providing language access, and it's a form of language deprivation. It's putting deaf students in a position of isolation and being the underdog for the rest of their life, and the education system would be doing more harm than good. Without the right support, these young children will suffer for the rest of their life. We're setting them up to fail in this big hearing world. Deaf students need to become dependent. They will become dependent rather than independent, since they were robbed of not having the correct modality of learning support. How will they survive in this hearing world? Maslow's hierarchy of needs show that we need to have the basis of safety. How can our deaf kids' future be bright? How can they strive for independence when they lack the support to gain those lifelong skills? They won't get the chance. How can these students gain a sense of love and belonging to empower them to be leaders and have a sense of connection when they're not in the classroom together with others just like them? How can they gain friendships when they're separated and isolated and assume to survive and thrive through this way throughout their life? And with this, how can they gain that self-esteem, status, and strength, freedom, and the respect to be able to become the best version of themselves, when we failed them? By not providing a deaf-centric learning environment, living a life with no sense of belonging and low self-esteem, how can a deaf student feel valued and safe? How is this equitable? Many hearing parents are not familiar what it's like to be deaf. They don't understand ASL or deaf culture, but in time, over the years, they get to the exposure and they see and they make the slow change of adapting ASL and deaf culture. For the deaf community, their hands may be silent, but this is a really loud conversation everywhere you turn. You can ask, and ask any of our deaf staff members, staff members in our district. There's a nationwide shortage of sign language interpreters. The estimated growth now until 2030 is 24% in the job industry. And with the shortage of sign language interpreters for our deaf students and deaf teachers and deaf parents, and without producing more sign language interpreters, we're doing more damage than good. What's the backup plan for our mainstream deaf kids? The CCTE has cut ASL, a part of ASL as well. Our district's culture and climate hasn't shown the Our district's culture and climate hasn't shown the equity that we all speak and we learn about. If we had the collaborative conversations with all of us, we can create positive solutions instead of making decisions without knowing the impacts. The lack of transparency and awareness is the greater picture that's creating mental health issues, burnout, and unclear expectations as to what we are doing with our students. The future makes me really nervous and none of this makes sense, so I just hope we can have a conversation, not to disconnect these valuable assets and beautiful gems like Kristi Dunn, our educator of the year, not to lose them, but to salvage it all and make this big turnaround. Thank you.
Hi Dylan.
Hello. Fourth grade teacher, Silver Star Elementary. Thanks for having me. People over profits, period. It is no more and no less complicated than that. The manic exhaustion of my houseless student, the desperate hope-clinging hustle of their family, these things are unquantifiable. So too are the daily realities of my pregnant colleague, or my bereft colleague, or my colleague from Ukraine. And so too then is the numbing despair that countless among us feel, teachers, students, and families alike, that we are drowning in this unsustainable quagmire because our supposed leaders continue to choose profits and numbers above all else. It remains an incredulous truth that the powers that be in public education, by and large completely unrepresentative of the communities they serve, mind you, have decided that the way to repair our broken system is to corporatize it, to monetize it, to affix abstract economic analyses and anemic spreadsheets to this most human of endeavors, to use words like stakeholder instead of teacher, institution instead of school, curriculum instead of learning. In the process, they have completely lost sight of the organic nature of education itself and have managed to hollow the whole enterprise out so thoroughly that it has become completely unrecognizable in relation to what it once was. We are a shell of a shell of a shell attempting to create meaning from ashes. I used to be proud to be a teacher. Now it just makes me sad. I am beset by unpredictable waves of emotion and depression on any given day of the week and I am ashamed and resentful of the fictions I am asked to paint for students, this ideal that we're all working towards some common goal as a community. This is a fallacy, an imagined utopia that does not exist and is impossible to achieve via our current circumstances, our deconstructive implementations. We are being left to rot on the battlefield of a culture at war with itself. And so, here we are. This is us, these are our lives and the lives of our students. We have lost beloved colleagues and gifted educators on this path, those used up and tossed aside by fractured failing ideologies. We are being marched down an undefined road of monotonous diminishing returns by administrative dysfunction and hierarchical inertia, even as those of us most impacted by the decisions being made have no voice in any of them. You cannot claim to care about people as you disenfranchise them, you cannot claim to care about students as you marginalize them, and you cannot claim to care about equity when you are uninterested in justice.
Next up is Kyla Ritchie. Hi, Kyla.
Hi, my name is Kyla Ritchie. I'm a parent of a deaf child in this district. Nearly six years ago, I found out my son was deaf. I did not cry because he was deaf. I cried because I was fearful I would spend his lifetime fighting for his educational rights. My parents, who were forced to fight for my deaf sister 30 years ago against this district and the state of Washington, assured me that times had changed and educators were more aware of the needs of deaf children. Sadly, they were wrong. And so I stand here today asking you, why? What are the benefits to my son or any deaf child in your district to close a program that has provided equitable education for the deaf for over 30 years? You are taking our children away from qualified experts and you are forcing them to attend schools that have not been exposed to the needs of deaf children instead of keeping them at a school that's had years of experience using interpreters and knowing the needs of their deaf students? What current educational research supports removal of a deaf and hard-of-hearing program? Has anyone in this decision-making process spoken with anyone who is an expert in deaf education or a member of the deaf community? It is pretty obvious the answer is no. It is important to acknowledge that deafness is not a disability that needs to be fixed, but a cultural and linguistic identity that should be embraced. By providing a deaf and hard-of-hearing program specifically tailored to the needs of deaf children, Evergreen School District can create an environment that celebrates their language, culture, and community. Deaf and hard-of-hearing programs like the one offered in this district gives parents and students the opportunity to have the best of both worlds, an opportunity for deaf students to interact with hearing peers while still having access to language models and build their deaf identity, which in turn will lead to their success as students. For a district that strives for equitable access to education, and to be clear, inclusion is not the same as equity, you have fallen short on a large group of vulnerable students in your district. Without the program, students like my son will be isolated in their school, with the hope that they will be provided with a qualified interpreter, if any, as there's an interpreter shortage. You, the school board, have claimed that there are not enough students to support the program. That is not true. My son's classroom is overflowing with deaf students. He comes home every day to tell me the stories of what he's learned with his friends, his peers, his equals. My family moved specifically to this district for this program. Isn't that what you want this district to be? A district that families want to be in? Since my son started this program, he has grown exponentially thanks to having direct access to his education. Removing this program is removing his and so many others' access to equity and educational success. My sister is a very successful deaf adult. She is currently the vice president for the Utah Association for the Deaf. She runs national leadership programs for deaf youth and she works for a Fortune 500 company. She got her start here at Fur Crest Elementary many years ago. Please don't take the opportunity away from our students to develop leadership skills, become lifelong learners, and go out to pursue their dreams in this world.
Next up is Dawn Fitch.
Hello, my name is Dawn Fitch and I'm here as a deaf educator of Evergreen Public Schools, but also as a community member and advocate for keeping the deaf and hard-of-hearing program here. First off, I want to recognize how crucial this program is and it's not only my community but to me. I wouldn't be here today without a program just like this one and my mother taught me to be a strong advocate and to stand up for what I believe in. And today I stand here before you to fight for our future, for the deaf youth. This program is essential as it provides many opportunities and rich experiences that will enable our deaf youth to lead successful and fulfilling lives. Sending each and every one of them back to their homeschools would only contribute to more hardships and struggles and obstacles in their learning environment as well as feelings of isolation, which would also lead to inequitable experiences, not only academically but socially as well. I would now, given my firsthand experiences and do not wish them upon anyone, especially our youth. Deciding to do away with the deaf and hard-of-hearing program eliminates many opportunities such as incidental learning happening with peers just like them, the chance to go on a journey of self-discovery and finding their identities, connecting with deaf and hard-of-hearing adults who serve as role models that the youth can look up to. In closing, shutting down this program deprives them of equitable access to language acquisition and education, a sense of belonging, community, and most importantly, a place many of us to this day have called home. So please consider continuing this program and secure a future for all of our deaf and hard-of-hearing youth. Thank you for your time.
All right, next is Sierra. Hi, Sierra.
You all know how much I hate this already, so. First of all, hello y'all. I would like to mention that our students and families are incredibly resilient and are capable of overcoming incredibly difficult challenges, barriers, and injustices. They persevere, but they should not have to. Your attempts to close the gap for students from a wide variety of oppressed identities and backgrounds come before much-needed fundamental changes that have yet to be made. We need fundamental change and progress, progress that oppressed groups have already been working toward for decades and centuries. Fantastic ideas, but flawed execution, we must remember to not tokenize the work of equity. In some ways, we are very lucky to find ourselves in a district where most students are encouraged by our staff to be their best, most authentic selves on the surface. How we publicly address issues of injustice is incredibly important, but what is more important is how we tangibly handle them. The unfortunate fact is that while we are seemingly committed to serving students to the best of our abilities in philosophy, this is not necessarily how things shake out on the day-to-day. I would like to remind everyone that passive injustice, ableism, and racism and so forth is sometimes just as harmful as active blatant discrimination. I think the biggest recommendation that I have for our district today is to follow through with the philosophy that we seem to pride ourselves on sharing publicly. Can we say that we are really accessible, equitable, and just? If most of our disadvantaged families and students still fall through the cracks, are we making progress effectively and responsibly? Or are we going to be complacent as slow progress is made? Will we work to ensure that we truly see to it that every single student is served, ensuring that every student gets the education and support they deserve? We know we are all busy and we know we are all certainly working tirelessly, tirelessly, but I think we should really ask ourselves, are we working efficiently and effectively? Are we truly doing all we can do? And are we really listening? Thank you.
Thank you, Sierra.
Thank you.
Hi.
For the opportunity. Can you hear me okay up here?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you for the opportunity to share my thoughts. Julia Apple, special education teacher at Hearthwood. Last year and this year, you put resources into gathering and analyzing data and creating and implementing a plan for how we were going to improve students' math scores. You gave us the pencil graphic to help illustrate the need for this work. This year and next year, you're putting resources into gathering and analyzing data and creating and implementing a plan for how we're going to improve students' feelings of belonging in school. I'm guessing there will be a graphic for this new strategic plan. Don't get me wrong, these things matter, but they matter a whole lot less when you have over 100 special education students who are not currently getting the services they deserve, need, and are entitled by law to receive. Giving us yet another district-wide goal to put energy towards feels insensitive when educators are leaving this district because they've been overworked and undersupervised for years without seeing any future plan for relief. A goal of bringing up test scores is meaningless when you continue to cut or eliminate programs, the latest one being the deaf and hard-of-hearing program, that students rely on just to gain access to learning. And you must know how absurd these goals are to early childhood special education teachers when their caseloads and staffing are so wildly inappropriate that they are barely able to keep our youngest students safe, let alone get them ready for kindergarten and beyond. We've collected and analyzed the data for you. What we need is for you to put your full attention and resources here to make a plan for how we're going to address this problem. If you want to improve students' outcomes and academics, support our most vulnerable students with adults who can help them access academic instruction. If you want students to feel good about being in this district, support your educators so we feel good about being in this district. Don't make our jobs harder by asking us to do more work and please, don't give us lip service about how important we are and then insult us and disrespect us at the bargaining If you want to make a difference in the areas that matter, if you want to attract people to this district, and if you want to have a district we can all be proud of again, stop inventing small problems with cute graphics just so you can look like you're doing something. Instead, do the hard, messy work of chipping away at the giant issue of actually supporting all students in ways that are truly inclusive and meaningful. And if you need a graphic to help, and if you need, you, need a graphic to help illustrate the need for this work, I would use a sinking ship because that's what it feels like we're
Thank you. All right, next is Elise Petosa. Sorry if I said that wrong. Elise, was the last name wrong? Oh, Petosa, okay. Elise, welcome.
My name is Elise Petosa. I have worked for this district for 23 years. This is the first year I have considered quitting in the middle of the year. Our schools are not safe. We do not have enough staff to keep our students or our teachers safe. This year, I have done six threat assessments, six, at elementary school. Four of those threat assessments were for targeted violence. The threat assessment determines if it's reactive violence or if it's targeted. Reactive is usually what you think about at elementary school. A kid gets upset, they lash out. Two of these threat assessments involve threats with a gun. With neighborhood schools, our special ed staffing is for safety, not for IEP needs. This year, I have provided the SDI for socio-emotional IEP goals. I've served only 13% of my students. I'm supposed to serve all of them. It is a regular occurrence for our students with behavior needs to leave their classroom, run through the hallways, cussing, yelling, throwing things. Last week, I was at kindergarten recess. One of our students had run away from his one-on-one. All she could do is yell to the kindergarteners, "Turn around, look out," as he randomly hit students on the playground. Three of them, at least, were escorted to the health room. Yesterday, a staff person got an item thrown at her and it chipped her tooth. Her tooth is, her mouth is still sore today. We have a student who once to two times a day loses it in the front office. He has hit students as they arrive late from school, to school, like from a doctor's appointment, randomly hit them in front of their parents. He has climbed up on the counters and thrown things. Ukuru staffer there with ukuru pads as his parent comes to pick up their children. I have students who've developed trauma from coming to school. There are classrooms who have experienced such aggressions and violence, those students become anxious when they hear the loud noises, the cussing, the throwing things out in the hallway. In one third-grade classroom, they rush to the door to make sure it's locked. Students cannot learn in an environment that is not safe emotionally or physically. What we need are more adults in our classrooms. We need time to collaborate, plan, and assess student progress. We need resources and support to address student needs because academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs are bigger than they've ever been before. So we need, and they are more frequent, we need more, not less.
All right, next speaker is Jenny Vertisca.
I apologize, I was asked to give this signed document to the board. There's 100 signatures.
Thank you.
Hello, school board members and superintendent. My name is Jenny Vertisca and I have two students in the district. This is my third time speaking here and my second time reminding you that I filled out the Google forms stating I would like to participate in a follow-up session regarding budget cuts. You have in your strategic plan that you will engage, listen, and value You have in your strategic plan that you will engage, listen, and value input from the community. I am waiting. I am here to express my concerns once again. I am concerned about the loss of librarians. Through them, I learned the concept of finding a mirror book or a window book. This concept directly supports your strategic plan, goal, of culture, of safety, and belonging. They are having a huge positive effect on students and their families. If you eliminate the librarians, who is going to be in the school keeping this concept going? Also, OSPI website has published revised code RCW28A.320.240, which says, "The teacher-librarian, who is defined as a certified teacher with a library media endorsement, shall assist high school students completing high school and beyond plans required for graduation." How can this be achieved if you eliminate the high school librarians? I am concerned about the loss of athletic directors. High school sports are critical in keeping some students in school and graduating. Students are introduced to a variety of student backgrounds through sports, and this develops a better cultural understanding and sense of community. Without athletic directors organizing these sporting events and keeping the students on track academically, we lose an opportunity to bring a diverse group together to support a common goal, our team and the student athletes. I am concerned about the drastic change to start times. Elementary school students will be waiting for the bus in the dark. Middle school students will be coming home from after-school activities close to 6:00 P.M. This is not safe. It also does not leave much time for middle school students to pursue other activities outside of school. Finally, I am concerned about the elimination of part-time Excel. We are here tonight wearing royal blue to express our support for the Excel program. Changing to a strategic cluster grouping model is concerning, because when that was used in the past, we were told by the teachers that they don't do anything different in the other, that the students don't do anything different than the other students in the classroom. By having just one full-time Excel grade at two schools now, only a small handful of students will receive the access to accelerated learning and enhanced instruction that a Washington law is part of a basic education for highly capable students. OSPI recognizes that highly capable students have unique academic needs that are not adequately met in the traditional classroom. Failure to create a unique curriculum is failing these students. Finally, I understand that compromises must be made in order to balance the budget. Please listen to your community and find other ways. You told us that these items would not be eliminated if we passed the levy. It passed. Now keep your word.
Thank you, Jenny. Our last person on the list this evening is Scott Shatterly. Hi, Scott.
Hi, good evening. My name's Scott Shatterly. I'm a parent in the district. This coming fall, I will have all of my five kids in Evergreen Schools, spanning high school, middle school, and elementary school. I myself attended Evergreen Schools from K through 12. I'd like to comment on the perception from parents of a lack of listening when it really counts. On some topics, when it's abstract ideas, it feels like there's a big display of listening. Like, in hiring the new superintendent, there was a paid consultant hired to do listening sessions, and there was a big outreach to get people to participate. Or the Youth Truth Survey, there's a big outreach to get people to provide input on how the schools are doing. But on budget cut priorities or schedule changes that impact families and students and staff directly, there was no outreach. There was no surveys, no listening sessions. So that's one of my concerns. A little more on the schedule change for middle school and elementary school. We acknowledge that there are studies that show there may be gains for middle schoolers, but there are also costs. And not just transition costs that will be over after the transition, but some costs that will carry on as long as the new schedule is in effect. And most of us don't believe the benefits outweigh the costs. So we, there are several people, we're not going to get used to this idea and just assimilate it and go away. Just in the last week, my wife and I put up a petition on change.org asking to keep the schedule for middle school and elementary school the same, and just in one week, 329 people signed it. So I speak for 329 of us, asking to keep the middle and elementary school schedules the same. And I'm also speaking about the part-time Excel program, the Excel pull-out programs that are being canceled. My kids have gone through those. I went through those myself in the early '90s. And from my personal experience, I know that if it's left to the neighborhood schools and the classroom teachers, it's not going to happen. The same academic challenge and experience for highly capable kids is not going to happen. So I also ask for concrete actions to provide a true accelerated learning opportunity for highly capable students and transparency on the money and resources that are being provided for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. All right, I want to thank everyone for coming again this evening. At this time, the board will call for a recess where we will sign documents. We will be followed by an executive session to review the performance of a public employee that's expected to last approximately 15 minutes. Again, thank you for coming. We appreciate you.